I call the word of the.
Plan and advisory commission meeting for Scott County, November 12th, 2024. And we'll start with the roll call and introductions.
Commissioner Hussein.
Present.
Commissioner Pika.
Here.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Von Hough.
Here.
Commissioner Henches.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Also present this evening is, at the end of our podium, Brad Davis, our planning manager. Next to him is Rachel Nasprus, our deputy clerk to the board. In the audience I see are zoning administrator Marty Spitz, Nathan Hall, our associate planner, and I see Tom Wolfe, our county commissioner as well here, and Greg Wagner, also here, senior planner.
And Mason.
Had to get Nathan. Okay, our first item of business this evening is approval of the October 14th, 2024, planning advisory commission meeting minutes. The commissioners have all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes as printed? Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion at this time to approve the minutes. So a motion by Commissioner Robbins, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pika, is there any discussion? Hearing that, I will call for a vote. All in favor, vote aye. Aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved. This evening, we have two items on our consent agenda. All items considered, listed, are considered by the planning commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a planning commission, board member, or member of the public so request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately. At this time, I'll open the public hearing to consider the consent agenda. The first item is number 2024-057, request to approve a rezoning of 80.65 acres from A1 Agricultural Preservation District to A3 Agricultural Preservation Density District, and preliminary and final plat of Alex and Brittany Kuschel addition consisting of two lots and one outlot on 80.65 acres, Alex Kuschel applicant and Carrie S. Kuschel revocable trust property owner in section 23 of Sand Creek Township. Would anyone like that item removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to mention that in this consent agenda, the amount that is given at 80.65 acres later on is mentioned in the, I don't know.
In the report?
And there is a discrepancy of, they, here they are saying a rezoning of 80.2 only. So I don't know where.
It's misprinted in the, what you believe. We know. Okay, we will make that correction. Thank you for pointing that out there. So we'll make the correction on 80.2 acres from 80.65. Thank you very much. Having that, would anyone like that removed from the consent agenda? Okay. The next item we have is item 2024-058, request to approve a rezoning of 96.17 acres from Urban Expansion Reserve UER District to Urban Expansion Reserve Cluster UER-C District, David and Krista Wursthofach applicants and Mostofah Family Farm Properties LLC property owner in section 16 of Sand Creek Township. Would anyone like that item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Okay? So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as we have it.
May I have a motion to approve the two items on the consent agenda, the entire consent agenda? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Robbins, a second by Commissioner Huber. Is there any further discussion before I entertain a motion? Okay, at this time, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, vote aye. 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 Nay to approve the, it was unanimous, to approve the consent agenda, and both items have been approved. Okay. Our next item is a public hearing, and this is a request to approve an amendment to the Scott County zoning ordinance, number three, to add chapter 17 cannabis land uses, amend chapter 16 land use descriptions and standards, and amend table 20-4 uses to establish zoning regulations for cannabis uses. And Brad Davis will be making the staff report this evening. Good evening, Mr. Davis.
We're going to be holding a public hearing on two items, and those both are listed on your agenda. So before I begin, I would like to ask the planning commission to formally open both public hearings.
Mr. Chair.
I move that we open both public hearings.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Huber, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Henches. All in favor, vote aye. Aye. Public hearing is opened at this time for both items to be considered.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So there are two different action items here before you tonight, two public hearings. They are related, so I'll be presenting them both here together. We'll provide a little bit of background and process and how we got to tonight's public hearings on the cannabis ordinances. We'll spend some time going over the brand new ordinance, that's ordinance number 37, that's the retail registration ordinance that establishes the registration process and then sets the limit on the number of retail establishments. Then we'll move to the amendments to ordinance number three, that's the county zoning ordinance. Those amendments deal with all of the zoning standards for cannabis land uses, where they'll be allowed, in which zoning districts, how they'll be permitted, what will be the setback in performance standards, how will the zoning ordinance treat temporary events. So we'll get into a lot of detail around those questions. And then when I'm done presenting and answering any questions, I then ask you to conduct those public hearings and take all the testimony you can get tonight, and then we can talk about next steps after that.
Okay.
So as you know from our previous workshops, the state passed what's commonly called a cannabis law that was passed in 2023, and it established the framework for all local units of government to start doing these types of ordinances in preparation for the cannabis industry. Minnesota is the 23rd state in the nation to legalize adult-use cannabis. The chapter 30, or excuse me, 342 legalized the recreational use of cannabis or marijuana and created different cannabis business types. And each of those business types will have a license, and these are different components of the supply chain or the cannabis industry. And so it's everything from growing and processing, packaging, transporting, delivery, testing, organizing events around the product, and then retail operation. Again, a lot of communities like Scott County are drafting and adopting ordinances now in preparation for the rollout of the industry in early 2025. That's when the state will begin issuing licenses for these different components. And as part of that licensing process, they'll be checking with local units of government to see if the use conforms with the zoning. And so that's why we need to get the zoning ordinances in place by the end of the year. So this is a topic that this planning commission has spent a lot of time with. If you recall, even over a year ago, we started doing some initial research to see how other communities have adopted zoning standards for the cannabis industry. We started some dialogue with the planning staff in Pueblo, Colorado, if you recall that. We found that that was a county that maybe we could learn some things, and so we reached out to staff and posed a lot of different questions that we got some answers to and held some workshops to thinking about the experience out in Colorado with this industry. And I think that helped then inform some of the thinking that went into our draft ordinances. More recently, we have held some initial workshops this summer. Once we started seeing some of the model ordinances come from the state of Minnesota, we started looking at those and getting some overall direction and framework for how we want to craft our ordinances. We had a couple of workshops with the planning commission and then also with the county board in September. In mid-September, I attended the Scott County Township Association Fall Meeting to share with them where we were at in drafting the ordinances, again, some of the general framework, the general direction that we're looking at. Got some feedback at that meeting, and then also informed all the townships what the process was moving forward. In early October, we had a first draft of the ordinance ready for release, so the draft went out to all 10 townships via email notice, letting them know that now is, we're into the comment period, start revealing the draft, discuss it at their own town board meetings if they have a chance, and start giving comment back to the staff. We published official notices for the public hearings. Now, our newspaper where we publish all notices for planning and zoning is at the Minnesota Star Tribune. Also email notices out to the 10 townships. We have had individual business owners or property owners that have been in discussion with our staff over the last several months, questioning just where we're at with the ordinance, what the progress we're making. And so those individual business owners or property owners were notified about tonight's public hearing and provided some of the ordinance language, just that they became aware of what direction the county was going in. So that's a bit of the process how we got to tonight. As I said, there's two ordinances. There's a brand-new ordinance that will become ordinance number 37 called Cannabis Retail Registrations. It's a standalone ordinance, a lot like the county standalone ordinance for tobacco licensing and alcohol licensing, so it follows that same mold of having a standalone license for this product. And then the next document is the amendments to our zoning ordinance. So combine these two ordinances, do establish the licensing standards and local land use And what's important for both of these documents is they apply to the unincorporated area. And that's always an important distinction, particularly in the zoning ordinance. We're just talking about regulating cannabis uses in the unincorporated area or the 10 townships. The cities, our eight cities are adopting their own retail registration ordinances, so they'll have their own city registration process. And our eight cities are also adopting their own zoning ordinance updates to prepare for this industry, for businesses that want to locate inside the city limits. Under the draft ordinances, all cannabis businesses under the county zoning jurisdiction must be licensed, registered with the county, and comply with state and local rules. Both ordinance documents follow the state's model cannabis ordinance, so they released one unified document that became the model ordinance to all of the cities and counties and townships. We broke them apart into two pieces, the new standalone retail registration ordinance and then the amendments to the zoning ordinance. The state does allow local units of government like Scott County to adopt reasonable restrictions on the time, place, and manner of the operations of cannabis businesses, but it cannot prohibit cannabis uses within its zoning jurisdiction.
Can I just ask, all of the cities in Scott County passed their own ordinances. This is our ordinance. Which one applies? In other words, if you're Shakopee and you have your own ordinance and we have one, which one applies?
Yep, if the business is locating within the city limits of the city of Shakopee, then the Shakopee's ordinance will apply. If the business is locating in land or property that's in the unincorporated area outside of the city of Shakopee, outside of any city, our ordinance here tonight will apply.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The cities are in the process of adopting. I know maybe one or two that have adopted their ordinance updates. I think the other cities are in the same place. We are holding public hearings this month and looking for a city council adoption in December. All right, so we'll move to the brand-new ordinance, ordinance number 37, the retail registrations, just some important bullets there on the page here. No individual or entity or business may operate a state-licensed cannabis retail business in the townships or the unincorporated area without first registering with Scott County. And you see there is violations, those are the standard violations that the state allows. So these businesses will first contact the Office of Cannabis Management, that is OCM. They'll first contact the OCM to apply for a state license. And as soon as the OCM is aware that someone is seeking a state license in our zoning jurisdiction, they will then contact Scott County to see if the business complies with local zoning codes and building codes. And they are setting up a new software system to track this information and notify all the local units of government if the business is looking to locate in their city or county, and then respond to the request through their software. So we will need to stand up a new retail registration application process, establish a fee, establish the submittal requirements, approval criteria, the annual compliance checks, the renewal process, and then the suspension process. So all of that is laid out in this new ordinance, 37. All of that follows the state model ordinance. We're not deviating from any of the provisions. We're remaining consistent with what the state has provided all of us, local units of government. Probably the one area that we added that the state model did not have was in the submittal requirements, Scott County, along with several other counties and cities, are asking for insurance, proof of insurance liability for the business that's applying. And you'll see that information in here. And I know that was a comment in one of our workshops, having that type of information. And that's similar to information that we require for other entertainment uses that come into Scott County. The new registration process will be administered through customer service. That's the staff downstairs that help people on a variety of things, but they've also helped businesses with renewing their alcohol and tobacco licenses and registrations. So they'll be the front-facing staff to administer the process, and of course, they'll be coordinating with planning and zoning staff to check on compliance with zoning codes and any building code issues. So the big feature of this ordinance is setting a limit on the number of retail registrations. So we've talked about this at our workshop. Under state law, we have to allow one retail establishment per 12,500 people in our county population. So this is the minimum number that we have to allow. And based on our 2023 estimate of 156,529, currently that yields 13 countywide retail establishments that we need to allow here in Scott County. That's today, and as you know, as the county grows, and we're usually one of the top two or three counties in terms of growth, and so we're going to continue to grow here. And as we continue to grow, that number then will increase proportionally by 12,500. So it won't always be 13. A decade from now, it could be 15 or 16. So that's that. What's interesting about that limit is that is our countywide limit. And what we've learned from the Office of Cannabis Management is that retail establishments registered in our cities can count towards that 13. So tribal establishments cannot. So if the SMSC does have a retail establishment, that will not count as one of the 13 countywide. But if we see these locating in Shakopee, Prior Lake, Elkland Market, New Prague, and if we see 13 of them locate across our eight different cities, we would then reach our cap here at the county, and we would not need to issue any retail establishment, retail registrations in the unincorporated area because we had hit our 13 max.
Brad, Brad, if the Native American population has their own shop, is it subject to their laws or to the Scott County laws?
It'll be subject to their laws or federal laws, not Scott County. Yep. So that was a discussion we had at the Fall Township Association because it's very possible that the market will be more interested in opening up these shops in our cities before there's a market or an interest to open these types of retail establishments in the townships. And so it's going to be a timing issue. It's first one in. We won't have a lottery. We don't have a system for determining who's going to get in. It's going to be the first one through the door. And so it's very possible that there will be 13 businesses that get up and running before that 14th business that might be in one of the townships comes to the county. And under our current ordinance, we will say, no, we are not going to register you. We've hit our cap. So this was a topic of discussion at the Township Association meeting. I posed the question, are there some townships that would like an exception to that or a carve-out to that? And even if we do reach our cap at 13, would our township still want the county to issue up to one retail registration? And we'll talk about the response to that question in a little bit. Retail registrations include not just the dispensaries that you might be thinking of, but it's also the micro businesses and the meso businesses. These are the places that both grow and then sell on the property, and then, I think it's meso that you can also consume on the property. Those two are one of the retail registrations that would make up this 13 total. That's something that I know some townships have asked, are we just talking about 13 dispensaries? Not necessarily. It could be five dispensaries, it could be two meso, it could be two micro, as long as you get to 13 total. So as I mentioned, we prepared what I call just the exception clause. We prepared some language in the draft ordinance that has placeholders for those townships that might want to be named as a township that would want to have one retail registration, even if the countywide limit is met. And so I've asked the 10 townships to let me know if they're a township that wants to be named. So far, no township has given me that direction. Louisville Township has explicitly told me they do not want to be named, so they don't want to be included in that. Spring Lake Township, who submitted a comment letter that I've shared with you and we'll talk more about, they indicated that they would like to be considered perhaps in the future to be included on that list, and they'd like to know, you know, what's the process to get named on that list if in the future they want to do that, but they do not want to be named today. And then a couple of other townships are meeting this evening and have informed me that they were going to talk about it tonight at their town board and let me know this week what direction they want to go.
So Brad, if we could have more than one township decide to do this, and so then there wouldn't be 13, there might be 15 in Scott County, is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just for clarification on this, when you're talking about the limitation, that just applies to the retail and the meso and the micro, is where there's a retail element to it?
That's right.
The cultivation and the manufacturing is not included in that.
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
And for clarification, the Office of Cannabis Management has to issue a license before they can come and get certified here.
That is correct.
So, and they're limiting that number as well too, correct?
The state of Minnesota?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of the state of Minnesota limiting any numbers.
There is a process.
There's a process to get licensed by the state, but I don't believe the state is limiting.
Okay. I just want to get the process down and what's happening at the state level, and then how that feeds into our situation here at the local level. Okay.
All right, so that's the key points in the cannabis registration ordinance. Shift now to the amendments to the zoning ordinance. Again, the Office of Cannabis Management will issue state licenses for 13 cannabis business types. And what we've done in our draft zoning ordinance is condensed and grouped those 13 types into seven land use categories. And so we've created a land use category called cannabis cultivator, cannabis manufacturer, testing facility, the meso business, the micro business, the retailer, the temporary event, and then wholesaler, transport, and delivery. Those are the seven land use categories. So far, we've been just talking a lot about the retailer one and a little bit about the meso and micro because they have a retail component. In the definition of these uses, we've also added the medical cannabis cultivation, manufacturing, retail, we've lumped them into those seven categories. Also, lower potency hemp businesses are also then included in the definition of these All right, so probably the big, one of the big questions in the zoning ordinance is where will cannabis uses be allowed? And this is where we talked a lot in our workshops. I think as a commission, you gave some feedback to be as conservative as possible starting out as we really learn this industry and what it's truly all about before we open up a lot of our unincorporated area for this activity. And so based on that direction, staff has been preparing an ordinance that directs these uses in the county's commercial, industrial, rural business reserve zoning districts. So these are what I call the non-residential, non-agricultural zoning districts, really focused and directed into those commercial and industrial zoned districts. For those of you that know the county well, those are primarily along our highways and freeways and interstates, so along 169, Interstate 35, County Road 21, a little bit of 13. That's where we have historically had that type of commercial or industrial zoning. So these are in places like Helena, Jackson, Louisville, Sand Creek, St. Lawrence, New Market, and Spring Lake Townships have this type of zoning today. We have a handful of townships that don't have any of this zoning. So places like Blakely, Bell Plain, Cedar Lake have no property zone in commercial or industrial. So the way that the ordinance is proposed tonight, those, no cannabis uses would be able to locate in those three townships. So again, so far, we're not proposing to allow any cannabis uses in agricultural, transition, urban expansion, or rural residential zoning districts. I know, we talked a lot about this. You've asked, what are other counties doing around the state? Other counties are allowing cannabis uses in their agricultural and rural transition areas, notably our neighbor Carver County. Their draft ordinance is allowing some of this activity in their agricultural zoning in some of their transition areas, particularly the cultivation, that's the growing operations, and the meso and micro businesses. I'm seeing other counties allowing that in their, kind of larger lot of transition zoning. But as we stand here tonight, Scott County is not proposing to allow that in those zoning districts. Yeah?
Brad, what reasons for that? I mean, I know we talked about that. What are the reasons for not doing it in those areas?
Yeah, what's been discussed so far is the, when it came to cultivation, there was a discussion that indoor growing operations into larger buildings did not seem like a, did not seem like a land use that you typically see in that agricultural setting, was some of the discussion. Not necessarily you don't see a large building out in the farm areas, but you may not see one that has a lot of fencing and security and lighting that goes along with that type of product. That was probably the biggest one, one of the reasons I've heard is the concern that an indoor operation might not feel like it's a really a compatible use with the agricultural area. The meso and micro businesses then do bring in customers onto the property typically because you're then growing it and selling it. And so that, you know, then generates some traffic, some activity in the agricultural areas that some weren't, some have not been supportive of that type of activity. Those have probably been the things I've heard the most. But again, other communities have decided they could overcome some of those impacts and figure out how to mitigate them.
Thank you.
So that was a discussion. So that was a, we'll talk more about where they're located in a little bit. We'll show some maps. But then the other question is, how will cannabis uses be permitted? Originally, we had a couple of different ideas, but based on some attorneys that represent a lot of townships and attorneys that represent the county more and more, and then looking at somehow our, how other cities and counties are permitting these uses, we're leaning really towards allowing them as interim uses. And we'll call IUPs, interim uses. Under state law, that allows local units of government to establish a specific date or event that would terminate the use on the property. And typically, we issue a lot of IUPs. They've become just as common as conditional use permits here in our county. But typically, the type of events that terminate the permit are the land is annexed into a city, if the land is further subdivided, or if the property is sells. Those have all been in some of the reasons why that IUP is gone away for other type uses. For this particular use, we could look at the failure to obtain a renewal for the retail endorsement. Could be another event that, yeah, terminates the cannabis IUP. Again, treating cannabis uses as interim uses appears to be a common approach I'm seeing in other cities and counties. Not all of them, but a lot of them are treating them as IUPs. IUPs can also be helpful in industries that do a lot of leasing of land and so, or leasing of properties or buildings to operate. We don't know yet if this industry is going to be an ownership type industry or if it's going to be more like our solar gardens that came in and did a lot of land leasing to operate. And when you're under a lease structure, sometimes it's nice then to have that interim permit so you can track also the removal of that lease as another fact, as another trigger to terminate the IUP. So it will have to wait to be seen if the industry is going to be buying buildings, buying land, or coming in and leasing property to set up their operations. For now, I think the advice is to treat these as interim uses. So this is a table, Table 20 dash four, that is in the title of the public hearing that would be amended. The items in yellow here would be the new addition to Table 20 dash four. Again, it's those same seven land use types, cultivation, manufacturing, meso, micro, retail, temporary, and then the wholesale, transporter, delivery. And then where they fall into the different zoning districts. And so in the C line, commercial zoning district, a cannabis retailer would be an interim use and a temporary event would be an administrative use. And then you can go across and see how the uses are, would be treated in the RBR, Rural Business Reserve, the I1, that's the rural industrial, and then the I2 is the heavy industrial. So for the most part, everything is interim use except for temporary events. We'll talk about that a little bit more, why that's showing up as an administrative, but it really depends on the size of the event. So we'll, we'll talk more. So that's notable. The other thing notable is again, you see a lot of empty squares or boxes under A1, A2, A3. Those are agricultural zoning districts. If they're blank, they're prohibited use, you can see that. And so again, this table is just another visual of how these uses are being directed only into the commercial and industrial zoning districts. This is the current Scott County zoning map. And so as I said earlier, the colors to look for for this discussion is the purples and And the dark purple is that heavy industrial zoning. The light purple is the rural industrial. The red is the commercial. And then the light blue is the rural business. So again, that's the part of the county that is being proposed that would allow any cannabis industry. You've got a couple of commercial lots along 169 in St. Lawrence Township. You've got a couple of lots on 21, just north of New Prague. You have some lots in Spring Lake Township along 13 and 282 that's industrial, a small parcel in Lydia, zone commercial. And then over in New Market Township, several parcels along I-35 and Pillsbury Avenue in either industrial or rural business. So that's a big kind of picture overview of where the industry would be allowed. We'll zoom into some more detailed maps in a little bit. As an aside, most of the incorporated area is zoned in these light grays. That's our agricultural zoning districts, our A1s and A2s is in the gray. And then the beiges are those large lot transition areas or urban expansion areas. So these are the areas that currently would not be allowed to have any cannabis industries in those light grays and light beiges. And then also notably, I guess, the yellows are residential zoning districts also would not be allowed to have any cannabis industry. So that's the zoning. Now let's talk about setbacks. So the state, the state does allow minimum setbacks. County can be more restrictive, but we're following the county's proposed setbacks. So a cannabis business would need to be 1,000 feet to the nearest property line of a school, church, or place of worship, or another cannabis retail business. And then 500 feet to the nearest property line of a daycare facility, a residential treatment facility, a public park with active uses. So they talk about athletic fields, baseball fields, playgrounds, or a neighboring residence. So again, the county is following the state model ordinance, but it did add churches or places of worship and residence. Those two facilities, I guess, or places are not included in the state model ordinance, but based on discussion with the planning commission, we did add that. So we did add church or place of worship to the 1,000 foot and then neighboring residence to the 500 foot. If you recall, when we had our discussions with the staff at Pablo County, they talked about odor was one complaint that they started hearing when, when the industry started up in the rural parts of Pablo County and lighting were the two, I guess, nuisances that they heard about. They didn't hear a lot of complaints, but if there was complaints, it was usually odor and lighting. And so those were some of the reasons, I think, we talked about to think about some of these setbacks, particularly from another residence living out on a property that you had some separation for odor and lighting. The other thing we learned from Pablo is there's a temptation, at least out there, for the industry to cluster together and be next to each other. And they had a few issues out there about that situation. And so they also recommended that as we structure our ordinances to think about whether we do want a cluster of businesses or have them separated out. So I think that led us to follow this idea of at least 1,000 foot separation between businesses. So I know in some of our most recent discussions, you wondered how those setback recommendations compare to other setbacks we have in our ordinance. So I put this table together today. Again, cannabis uses are being recommended to be 500 feet to the property line of a residence or 1,000 feet to the property line of a church. Adult uses, which is adult bookstores and video shops and those types of uses, X-rated bookshops, they also have similar setbacks of 1,000 feet to a property line, 1,000 feet up to a residence and a church property line. Feedlots, and those were brought up in our workshops, more about the odor than anything else. They're under our current rules, if it's a feedlot that I'll say is smaller, less than 250 animal units, the setback is 500 feet to the structure. And so that's an important distinction to keep in mind as we start looking at buffer maps, whether it's measured to the structure itself or to the property line where the structure is located. Those are two important things. But for feedlots, it's 500 feet to the structure. We don't have a setback for feedlots to a church and then 100 feet to the property line. If it's a larger feedlot over 250 animal units, you can see then it's, it's up to 1,000 feet to the structure. So those are just some reference points as we think about the cannabis setbacks we're considering. So with all that, staff started putting together some maps. I know that was a request from the planning commission is let's take a look at how these setbacks play out in the different townships where the zoning is located. So this is a map of the I-35 corridor and Elkanu Market. Again, everything in the colors are either a light industrial or rural business reserve or a commercial zoning. And then Greg Wagner and our staff plotted where there's churches, schools, childcare facilities, residential treatment facilities, or a neighboring residence in relation to these parcels. And then started through GIS figuring out what those 1,000 or 500 feet setbacks would look like. And that's what you see then in some of the gray buffers are those setbacks. And you start noticing just how more restrictive some of the parcels become with these proposed setbacks. It doesn't render these parcels unusable for a cannabis use. It just means that the actual business or micro or meso, whatever the operation is, would have to locate on the parcel in an area that is outside those buffers. Now, these are approximates, and when an actual application comes in, we'd have to do a more detailed measurements. But if a business was looking to locate, I'm going to pick this commercial property here. If interested business wanted to seek a state license to locate a business here, they could still do so. They would just need to locate on this property in a way that they're outside that 500 foot buffer. So like I said, it doesn't make the parcel unusable for cannabis businesses. It just really helps suggest or dictate where the building or operation could be located on these parcels. But there are certain parcels that, that because of the proposed setbacks really do make it difficult or impossible to put up a cannabis business because they could just not meet those setbacks. You'll see that in a series of maps. This is just the Elkanu Market map. We'll move now to the New Prague. So New Prague, Helena area. So Helena has a couple of commercially zoned properties today along 21. I think it's a mini storage. What's the other? Yeah, so it's a mini, today it's a mini storage and some other use. But in the future, let's say it sells and someone that wants to do a cannabis business in those, in that location. Here's a situation where because of the setbacks, because these lots are right next to a neighboring residence, the setbacks really matter. You would not be able to operate on that entire parcel, or it looks like in that entire parcel. Down here, because we have some zoned properties right next to a church, again, that, those parcels would not be feasible, given the setbacks. So that's the Helena situation. We'll zoom up to Spring Lake Township. Spring Lake Township has a lot of property in the Dairy Lane Industrial Park Zone I-2. So those, again, that zoning permits the seven different land use categories, but you can see how some of the setbacks would influence that. Spring Lake also has another unique situation, and that is that this area is now part of an orderly annexation agreement with the city of Prior Lake. And the city of Prior Lake has extended zoning authority into this area. So it would really be the city of Prior Lake and whatever ordinance they come up with for cannabis businesses will apply to this orderly annexation area. But I didn't exclude it because I still felt it was just a good visual to see the impact of some of these buffer standards. Down in Lydia, there is a commercially zoned property. It's the old school site. Again, as you, as you know, Lydia and the cluster of homes around Lydia and the church, with both the church and neighboring properties really makes that site unavailable to put up a cannabis business the way we have our buffers proposed. And then St. Lawrence Township, there is a small parcel that used to be an old gas station down here on 169. Looks like it would not be feasible, given the buffer to a neighboring residence. Some uses right at the edge of the city limits here would not meet the neighboring, the resident setbacks. It really makes just a few locations of the Yellow Candy Barn, the OK Corral Supper Club, and some of the adjacent uses there, an industrial site here. Those are the only ones that look like they would not be impacted by the 100 footer or 1,000 foot or 500 foot buffers.
Is there a process for this setback dispute or disagreement resolution?
Yeah, Commissioner, if you're asking if there's a variance process to these setbacks, it's a, it's a good question. I don't know how much, I don't know if we would treat that variance like all of our other standard setback variances, if we can, if the applicant can show hardship, if we'd have to follow the same criteria with a cannabis use? That's a good question. And it's one I'll have to dig into a little bit and see if we have to follow different standards for a variance. All right. So that's the St. Lawrence, Jordan area. And then this is a zoom into that Jackson, Louisville, and Sand Creek Township, again, where most of our land is in these, these commercial or industrial zoning categories. And not to repeat myself, but you can just see the visual of some of those proposed buffers. So these maps were shared with the townships last week, just to give them one more piece of information as they think about any comments they want to provide. And even though tonight's the public hearing, we'll still be taking comments when we take this to the county board by mid-December. So I know a lot of information just keeps rolling in, and, and so I'm not going to say we're not going to accept comments after tonight. This is a one milestone, but we'll certainly continue to get input as we move forward. But hopefully, these maps can be helpful in thinking about both the zoning and some of the buffers that are being recommended. So another part of the ordinance is dealing with performance standards. So again, to, to obtain a state license for those different industry components, you're going to have to follow certain standards for hours of operation, security and lighting, wastewater management, ventilation, filtration, provision of utilities, solid waste management and signage. So the ordinance that you have in front of you just refers to those state standards. You're going to have to meet them. We're not going to try to replace them or restate them so that if they change, we have to change. We're just going to say you need to comply with the state performance standards. But there are a few areas where we, where we stay, even beyond those, there's some things that we're going to want to see in the county in our own performance standards. And that deals with signage. I know that there's some basic rules for signage, but I think if it's, for us, if it's going to be a freestanding pole or a monument sign or a building sign, we're still going to look for the business to meet our, our basic standards for that type of exterior signage. State is silent on landscaping and screening, so I think we're proposing that they're going to need to meet our general standards for any business use or industry to meet landscaping, both around the building itself, around the perimeter, if you're adjacent to a residential use, some additional screening, exterior lighting, making sure that there's not lights spill over into neighboring properties, exterior building standards. Just because it's a, it's a new industry, doesn't mean that we still aren't going to expect buildings that have facades that meet our standards and entryways and windows and things that we expect of any business coming into the county. So those would remain in place. So we talked about those in the ordinance. All right. Temporary cannabis events was a topic that we spent some time with. These are events where the license holder can stage an event to invite people onto the property to learn about cannabis or buy cannabis or consume cannabis. the property to learn about cannabis or buy cannabis or consume cannabis. These events, again, if you recall back on that table, would be allowed in the commercial, industrial, or rural business zoning districts. The way that we've proposed it is that a state licensed temporary cannabis event can last no more than two days and no more than one event per year on that, on that property. Any event that's planned for what I'd say a smaller crowd of 250 to 500 people would require a large assembly administrative permit. So that's something that we already have in the county. Anyone that holds any event that brings in more than 250 people under their property needs to obtain a large assembly permit. If certain size, it's an administrative permit. If it's over 500, it would be a large assembly interim use permit. And so that would then go through the process like all our IEPs. Again, we've had a large assembly permit chapter in our ordinance for 20, 30 years. It's worked well for us. It covers things like parking, traffic control, onsite security, emergency response, hours notice, sanitation for the events. So we've got a pretty good established checklist and review of all of those things, and that's what we'd expect with a temporary cannabis event. One thing we learned, or you asked, I think, is could the event organizer, license holder be out of county? I did learn, yes, that can happen. You could have a, a business that operates in another county but want to hold the event in Scott County. That can happen. They still need local approval to hold the event in that location. The other thing is that it would not count if they were to sell during that event and get a retail endorsement. That does not count as one of the 13. Permanent endorsement, it's a temporary. So it's not going to count towards the 13 is what we've learned. So I'm trying to think. All right, so then we'll get to the township comments to date. Really, Spring Lake Township is the only township that's provided formal comments. They spent some time preparing the letter. I appreciate that the letter came in, shared it with the Planning Commission, and have a slide here of just what I thought were the high points. But they are here tonight and can speak more on the letter during the public hearing. But Spring Lake Township is asking the county to consider an outdoor cultivation land use. And in my mind, that would be then splitting the cultivator into maybe an indoor cultivator and then line up what zoning that could be in, and then an outdoor cultivator, and then line up where outdoor cultivation could occur. What the township is asking is if outdoor cultivation could be allowed in the transition, the urban expansion in the rural residential one zoning districts. So those are those beiges and yellows that are shown on the zoning map. Allow it as an interim use permit like we've proposed for the other cannabis uses. When it's tied to Mesa or a micro business, again, require that the retail registration happens here and is counted as one of the 13. Really separate it so that if we, if they did have an outdoor cultivation land use, you could not on that same property have indoor cultivation. Have certain standards for those outdoor cultivation or grow areas. What the township was recommending is could not exceed two acres, must be fenced and screened. Set back 100 feet from the property lines and not visible from the public right away. And the outdoor grow operation or cultivation would have to be accessory to the residential use on the property, and that would have to be an owner occupied operation. So things that Spring Lake Township is recommending, again, they're also asking to show some language in ordinance number 37 describing how it could be amended in the future to add a named township if Spring Lake was, was interested in doing that. They could then add their name to the list if they're not going to do it now or this, this month. So that's the comments so far. Again, I know we'll probably be hearing from a few other townships from their meetings tonight or from the, during the public hearing. There might be townships that want to comment on the record tonight. With that, I will pause and turn it over to you for questions.
Mr. Chair.
Chris Robins.
Brad, when you started this presentation, you talked about things that were concerning about cannabis ordinance. One of them was the odor that people remarked on, and the other one was light. And I'm looking at these things. What did you mean? What does that mean, light? Does it mean light in the field or what?
Yeah, well, so if it's, I think we talked about lighting in a couple of ways. If it's an indoor operation, we've learned from our research and talking to others, it consumes a lot of power to light the plants as part of an indoor operation. And we've had some discussions whether there's some areas of our county that have the infrastructure, the electrical grid infrastructure to power that type of building in certain areas. What we've said is if we did start opening up the rural areas for that use, we would need to make sure that the operator can demonstrate that they've got adequate electric.
But was one of the, was one of the comments that the light would be too bright? Or is this more of a power thing that you?
Well, so that was part of it. I think it was a power thing when it was an indoor cultivation, and we asked ourselves, is our electric infrastructure set up to allow these in our egg areas? And I don't know, it's been a discussion point. I don't think we've answered it. But then when it comes to the exterior of the building for security, there'll be outdoor lighting of the building. And that's also, we've had discussions about what's appropriate to light up some of these industrial, or excuse me, indoor growth facilities if it requires a lot of security light. How is that compatible to a rural setting?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Brad.
Any other questions at this time?
Chair.
Mr. Pika.
Brad, like Louisville has a lot of flood zone on the east side of the highway. Is that a concern at all?
Good question, Commissioner Pika. Like all land uses, the buildings and structures would not be allowed to be built in the flood.
Outdoor?
A flood, wait. Outdoor cultivation, it could be considered that you could grow in a flood plain. I haven't looked at that specifically, but it's a good question. If we do start wanting to open up areas for more outdoor cultivation, I could see how flood plains would, would interact with that. I, I would assume that we would allow people to grow in a flood plain and take the risk of that area flooding if they so choose. But you could not put up a structure in the flood plain.
There's 13 permits will be available. Do we have that many sites available with the setbacks totally? I mean, do we even have 13 of them?
Yeah, Commissioner, it's a good question. I think just looking at the different maps, knowing what's on the ground, knowing the number of buildings that are already in these areas that change over a lot. There's always new tenants that come into these different buildings that we have today. I'm pretty confident that we have enough land or buildings that flip over enough or on the market for sale or up for lease that we could accommodate 13 retail businesses. But remember, the 13 number that we've been talking about is just retail. It's not.
Okay, not growing.
Warehousing, growing, that can be unlimited. We don't have a 13 cap on that part of the industry. It's just the retail component.
Thank you.
Good point. Good point.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Thanks very much.
Thanks, Brad.
At this time, we're going to open up the podium to the public for these public hearings. Both of these items before us at this time. And what we'd like is if you could come up to the podium, and there's a signup sheet, and start with your name and offer your input at this point. So it is an open podium if anyone would like to make comments at this time. There's a signup sheet right next to it there. And then just start with your name.
Hello, I was actually, I'm in one of the RBR districts. That is, you know, and I've actually, I have, you know, you guys approved me doing buildings there, so I don't know if you remember seeing me before. But I've had a lot of, I've had people reaching out to me on this.
Just start with your name, sir.
Oh, I'm Eric Carlson. My bad.
Eric, thank you very much.
One of the things that I, I saw on there is that, you know, that I was in, because my house is on the property. Would I still fall, because I don't have a neighbor within 500 feet, would I still fall within those same things because the person that's doing it's actually me if I was in a, allow people to do this? Would I still have, would I still fall out of this because of my house being on there if it's me that's asking for it?
Yes, I'll have your match at that right now.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question. And I think that right now that we propose it is it's the neighboring house that we would do the measurement from. We would not measure.
Include the property orders.
We would not include if there's a house on the property, we're assuming that the operator's living in that house and is okay with that operation. So we've always considered it the neighboring property.
Okay.
Not a home on the property. Yeah.
Okay, that answers your first question. Did you have other input? Oh, go ahead. You can, please come back up to the podium.
You know, that's, that's nice to know because then I would be, everything would be okay as far as where my location is. I don't have a neighbor within 500 feet. And I've had a lot of people reach out to me because I am building, you know, the 5,000 square foot buildings, and that falls in the right parameters for one of the licenses. I honestly don't know anything about it. I'm not, not really my bag of tea, so to speak, but I'm into, you know, if people want to rent a building, hey, and I can provide a service, you know? There's a lot more to it. This is Jose, he actually grew up in Michigan and he did a ton of.
My name is Jose Maltoz. I'm with New Oceans Logistics. We're a cannabis consulting company. My main priority was to come home and apply for one of these licenses, but due to the fact how Minnesota is making a lottery with limited licenses, I've kind of changed directions myself. So me and Eric, we're focused on putting a building up, but now we're more worried about putting a building up for other people and other operators to come in and have a place to go due to the fact that it's limited licenses and limited areas. I have 12 years of cannabis experience in Michigan, Oklahoma, and New Mexico. I'm looking forward to helping any way possible from operators to city councils, town councils, helped do it in the past. Education's key, you know? So that's kind of why we're here. We just wanted to show face, offer any sort of support to, you know, zoning commission or the county council as well. But we're just excited to grow with the county. You know, Scott County is a growing thing, and this is a good opportunity, and it's the next wave of a good industry, and we're just looking to do our part as well.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Robins.
You said you're, you're building a building. Is it a spec building?
So he was going to begin into commercial real estate. That's when we kind of teamed up, and our first game plan was to build a building for me to move into to apply. Then we kind of changed directions, and now we're more towards building individual units for operators to go into. These would all be indoor facilities, and it's not just for growing, it's for lab testing, secure transport, everybody. Yep.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Do you guys have any other questions or?
We may. We may.
Yeah, please feel free to reach out. I'll make sure to give you guys my card information.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
So Greg pointed out kind of a unique situation with Mr. Carlson and his property that we should just talk about, kind of talk, think through. But the way the ordinance is established is we're, again, 500 feet from the nearest property line of a residence. And what gets interesting with Mr. Carlson's property is it's right along I-35. And some of those, mine's the right one. Oh, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, down here. Some of the homes that we're talking about are across Interstate 35 in this area. So we're, we're not factoring in interstates or highways. It's just 500 feet, 500 feet. And it's to the property line, and it's not to the home itself. The home, the homes on some of these parcels are, you know, up in this vicinity, but because it's on a property with the deep, deep line out down to the interstate, that's where that 500 feet touches. So sometimes planners don't like these 500-foot setback things because you run into so many unique sizes. Do you hop an interstate? Do you hop a river? You go to the house or do you go to the property line? Well, all we can do is go by black and white when we draft these ordinances, and right now it says to the nearest property line. But if you can ask yourself, does that make a difference in that type of situation? Does 500 feet get the same result when you're interstate over and the house is really way over, but yet you're 500 feet to the property line?
So can I just clarify? I think I know it's, the interstate, the width of the interstate counts within the 500 feet. Is that right?
That's right.
All right, thank you.
Do you have a recommendation? I mean, because you're kind of leaning that way, and I, I can, and can see from this that you're saying, well, this has, this, we want you to visualize the impact of what 500 feet means. But obviously, and when we had discussions about this and we're thinking about this, our intent was we didn't want this right on top of residential adjacent use because that would cause significant issues, and it, and it just does. And our experience for many types of uses is that we're trying to stay away from that. Is there something else that's, you know, you might think would be more workable on both ends, but without losing that ability to protect adjacent uses?
I think one idea that we, when we started seeing the maps at a staff level and we started seeing how many parcels start getting impacted by these setbacks, I think, I'll speak to myself, I think maybe we should measure from the residential structure itself and not the property line of where that residential structure exists. Because I think so many of our residential properties are large, large parcels.
Right.
That consume a lot of land and really start, what you can see on the map, really start.
And is that a difficult administrative distinction to make? Because that makes sense to me, and, you know, if my property is 750 feet long and my house is on one end of it, and, and, but you're measuring from the property line, then, then we're not, we're not achieving what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
At the same time.
I think it was a helpful mapping exercise to start showing what, what this all really meant. And I shared this slide with you because we have figured out, you know, in other uses to not go to the property line. And as I said in our examples with feedlots, we measure to the structure itself. And so that, that'd be one idea I would, might throw out there is to consider when it comes to residences. And I don't know if the same thing applies to churches, but there's just so many, as you know, residential properties around all of our zoning districts.
Right.
That we may have to think more about the setback to the structure than the property line.
I would certainly be comfortable with that because the objective is to the structure, is the impact that would have to the structure and not necessarily to the property. You know, because our properties tend to be very large and adjacent to these areas where it'd be allowed. That's just my point.
Well, can I just add something?
Sure.
This probably gets too complicated, Brad, but, you know, one of the things doing, I see the point, it's a good one, is if you're going to change it or something, you may want to start with the size of a lot. If it's a small lot, then the property line might work, but you might want to say lots that exceed a certain size. Because otherwise, you know, if you get a small lot, then, you know, that gets pretty close if you start from the property and not the property line. So you might want to consider about what size of lot you're talking about.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
I'll stand back for any other public comments.
Okay. It's still an open public hearing at this time, and the podium is open if anyone else would like to make comments.
I'll make a comment.
Okay.
More of a question?
This is the place to have it.
Ted Kowalski, Spring Lake Township. The question really isn't related to us in particular, but this discussion that Brad's having with you right now to the structure, to the property line. So let's say we set it up where it's to the structure. This is the piece of property instructors over here were more than 500 feet, but this property goes to subdivide in the near future, and it would then have houses within 500 feet. Does this one not get to subdivide?
Good point.
Thinking of my own checkbook.
It's a good question, Ted, and I think the state model ordinance dealt with that situation. So there's language that says in that situation, whoever was there first can stay. can stay. So the cannabis business would be able to stay even though they subdivided and there's now homes closer than 500 feet.
But it would still allow the homes to go.
It would still allow the homes to go.
And the question would be, would it allow the property owners still to subdivide the property?
Yes. They could subdivide, put homes closer and the cannabis business could stay because they were already there. Yeah.
Okay. Monica?
Lisa Quinn, Spring Lake Township. Um, my question is, do the buffer zones apply to the events?
Good question.
Yes, yeah, as we've currently proposed that any event and where that event takes place would need to comply with the buffers. And so I think I've learned that when, if someone does apply for a temporary event, they need to, um, submit a site plan showing the footprint or perimeter of where the event's going to be staged. And then in my mind, that perimeter of that event would need to be 500 feet or 1,000 feet from these different places. Yep. But to answer your question, um, it does apply. Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
One more, just out of curiosity. If, uh, just, I was wondering about people that are doing events. Let's just say for instance, if they actually, you know, the whole point of this is so that you don't annoy your neighbor or piss someone off in a general sense of it, which I can understand because like if I go to the fair and then you walk by, you know, I've got little kids and when I walk by someone that's smoking like a broke stove and it just stinks and you're like, what the hell, you know, I get that. Um, but let's say if someone was going to put on one of these events in one of the zones and they actually got the people's permission, you know, that were impacted by this or if this is, let's say that there was, you know, this person, this person's house is within that area and if they had a written consent from those individuals, would that permit or would that situation change? You know, I, I understand it's a blank policy, but is it a, is it bendable because of who you'd be offending or not really?
Yeah, it's a good question and it's a question we've been asked for a variety of land uses, not just cannabis, but for several things. And our practice has been no, we don't allow consent to the neighbors to do a certain activity. It's, we just look at if it's allowed or not allowed, if it meets setbacks or doesn't. And, um, you can't change that situation if you have neighbors that really like your, like the use. So the short answer is no, we, we don't have any waivers for any land uses. We're not treating it differently, but that's just not how our ordinance is structured.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. At this time I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearings.
I'll move.
A motion by Commissioner, uh, Robbins.
I think that's my name, yes.
Yeah.
And a second?
Second. Second, Commissioner Pika. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
At this time I'll, uh, entertain, we have two motions, I believe, at this time and I've.
Yeah, I suggest we take them one at a time.
Yes.
And so do your motion on the cannabis registrations. And, um, there are the big questions were, um, will we, um, prepare a language that describes how the ordinance can be adopted if a township does want to exceed that cap? Currently it's 13, but whatever that number is in the future. Um, we don't have that language today and if you want to recommend a motion that asks us to include that before we take it to the county board, we could do that.
Right. Mr. Chair, can I, uh, ask, and then I have a comment.
Yeah, absolutely.
You say take, is it ordinance 37 we take first? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, then, Mr. Chair, can I make a couple of comments on this?
Sure.
Well, um, you know, this is, uh, for all of us, the new world, you know, we haven't done this before. Um, so, uh, you know, we have to tread carefully. Um, I, um, want to thank everybody, uh, for coming here tonight and also, uh, thank Brad Davis. Uh, it's a wonderful presentation, Brad. I appreciate all of the detail that you included in that. I think, um, uh, that we can approve this. Um, I think what you've seen and heard, uh, in the last half hour, 40 minutes, uh, was an authorship that took into account not only the things that are happening in other states that have this ordinance, but tried to appreciate and plan for all of the contingencies, all of the things that might happen. And, uh, at least I'm persuaded that, uh, the staff has given us something that's workable. Now, you know, since, since this is new, there will probably be things that will come up after it's passed and everything which we'll deal with. But I think you heard some good questions here tonight. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I let my colleagues talk, but I would certainly be in favor of passing ordinance 37.
Okay. Additional comments? I'm, uh, comfortable with this ordinance as drafted. Um, I am open to the addition of, uh, if the 13 retail were taken by the cities, that there would be opportunity for the townships if they were interested to add additional ones. One per township that would be available if, if you're, if, if the board would be in favor of that. And I, I'd still, uh, be in favor of going to the structure on the residents, but that's.
We'll talk, we'll talk about that at the next.
Okay, that's on the zoning part.
Yep.
Okay, and I want to go talk about that. But that, that was the only thing I would, I would add to this at this time.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I can, then I'll make a motion that the board approve, uh, ordinance number 37.
Okay. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second. I'll refer to, ladies first, he says.
Just a second. Uh, a motion by Commissioner Robbins. Is there any further discussion? Do I prefer a call for a vote on this? Okay, hearing none? All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. As we amended it slightly there.
Yep.
Okay. The next thing that we're considering is the, uh, the zoning changes, um, that we discussed and that's where I got ahead of myself a little bit and talked about the, the going to the structure.
Yeah, I can establish, I think there's two, what I heard tonight is there's two things to consider when it comes to the zoning changes. One is the setback you've already alluded to. Do we measure from the property line of a residence or the structure of a residence?
Mm-hmm.
So whatever guidance of the planning commission you want to offer there. I think the second big question is what was posed by Spring Lake Township that I think we want to talk some about tonight and get your direction. And that is, should we consider outdoor cultivation as a separate land use category and then allow those outdoor cultivation uses in much more of the county in that transition, the urban expansion and the RR1 zoning districts? That is a big policy shift. I think it's worth a discussion. We have a township that has proposed that. Um, and I think it needs some deliberation.
I agree. Well, go ahead, Commissioner Robbins.
Mr. Davis, are you suggesting then because of that and everything that we might not pass or want to act on this tonight?
I'll, I'll just wait and see what kind of discussion, questions, what information you would need to feel confident you could give direction. If that's tonight, it's great. If it's not, then we would have to come back on December night.
Can I, can I follow up, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The, um, I'm, I'm puzzled about the structure thing. Uh, that seems to be the big thing here and, and just once again, just so we know, because we, the chair has kind of given us an example. You can either have it from the structure going across land that the owner owns to where the facility is, or you can say, no, you have to go to, on a big lot that's, that's, uh, very large, but you can't even start measuring it until you get to the lot boundary. Um, so the, the actual operation might be really far away from where your structure is.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I have to confess, I'm of two minds, but I, I'd like to at least hear what the chair has to say about that.
Well, and, and this is a whole different thing with the outdoor cultivation.
Yeah.
And, and this kind of consideration with, with the, what was suggested by, uh, like not to exceed two acres and, and the, what Spring Lake was kind of talking about and kind of like, um, what happens on a lot of 10 acre and 20 acre parcels is people have businesses running off of them.
Yep.
It's very, very common, you know. Probably three of my five neighbors have businesses that they work out of their home, you know, and, and do that. And that's very, very common. Um, this has a little bit of a different flavor to it and, and in my mind, um, I like the idea of things being screened, fenced and, and not, not viewable from the right of way and those kind of things on it. And, you know, just a pure cultivation. I think that's what Spring Lake's kind of talking about here is what if people just want to have, cultivate a couple acres or an acre, uh, on, on their property and have that capability to do that. Um, I don't know how that changes, you know, um, impact around, you know, because there's, like you said about, um, it's, it's different than just having hay or oats or soybeans in your field to have. You know, and, and if you're cultivating outside, it's, it's a little bit different animal.
Okay.
And so that's why I think we need to be, do our due diligence on this, you know. And I'm not saying that it can't be done. I just said that in the, Donna, you can talk to this as well.
Yeah, just what he said. To me, the whole idea of cultivating it outdoors, you have a 10 acre plot, you, two acres, you're going to grow cannabis. There are all sorts of different issues there. There's the smell. There's, uh, appropriate fencing so the neighborhood kids aren't all having a swell time on the weekend. There is, there's just all sorts of, of problems that are not, not, that don't exist if you're growing it indoors. So I think that would require a little, another look at doing it outside and the manner in which it could be done where we would feel comfortable with it.
It'd be tough on a 10, don't you think?
Oh, yeah. I don't know how you could grow out on a 10 and not have the neighbors on four sides and all about it.
Right, right. And that's, and, and just, I mean, there's challenges there and not to say that it can't be done, but I, I think it would need a deeper look.
Yep.
Then, I just wouldn't want to say, well, let's do that right now, you know. I mean, that we would do that, you know.
If I could, Mr. Chair, the difference in all of this discussion is, is cultivation that's indoors and, and guarded and, and outdoor cultivation. That's certainly where we, and I think Donna said something, you know, if you take a look at outdoor cultivation that's on an open field, then there are some issues about who gets to it, who can go to it, who plays in it.
Right.
And that's different than a locked, secure inner thing.
True.
Um, so.
And, you know, I'm, you know, like if you look at the solar gardens, we have those all fenced. Those are visible. And we were trying to not have them be visible from the right, right of way and stuff, but, but when you drive by them and you see them, uh, you know, they're, they're visible and then, you know, so, and those are fenced with security fences all the way around them and stuff. Um, so I, I just think that we really need to, to consider this because, because this is a thing that I think would, has a potential to either work very well or have a, a bad impact on the surrounding properties and, and that's what concerns me with this, at this point.
Mr. Chairman, is anyone from Spring Lake Park here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you, uh, expand upon, uh, the letter we have here in front of us? Maybe you can give us some kind of insight as to what the outcome is intended, tenet here.
In talking with our planner who's worked with this in other states, the smell isn't as bad on a small grow that's outside and because of the dilution of all the air compared to being indoors.
Right.
It dissipates very quickly and maybe close by you'd know that something was in the air, but you wouldn't be able to identify it as a cannabis grow area. We have wineries, we have, you know, that's why it was kind of tied in with the mezzo businesses. You get the experience.
Right.
We have some of that in Spring Lake Township. We have a lot of agricultural. We're trying to figure out a way for our residents to have ag properties and maybe tens are too small. Maybe it needs to be bigger than that, um, that they can use their ag for this type of production. So I'll ask this question. If somebody has a feedlot and decides in the very middle of it grow two acres of cannabis, would anybody know? Would anybody care?
Cows would know.
So that, that was kind of where we went with on that.
Yeah, no.
And that's why we even asked for maybe the little future carve out in case we do want to have a retail operation. We just don't want to be blocked out. I agree with everything you're saying that it's a new type of business. We really don't know where this is going, what's it going to be like. Yet we don't want to step out too far, you know. So if it's something that can't be approved now, maybe we can talk about it in the future as we get more research from the first couple of years of this going on.
And, and I really think that's the way that, that, you know, I'd feel more comfortable with that and we'd have a better idea of how this would work. And, and, you know, I agree with you. I, I think there's a potential there.
Yeah.
But, but it's also a thing that wouldn't work at every property.
Yeah, I have a lot of safety concerns because I know teenagers, okay? Uh, you know, they won't be tipping over cows anymore. They'll be trying to get the cannabis out of somebody's field.
But, and I had the same question, but, you know, Jen explained to us that to make the state rules for the registration, they have to make all those requirements fit. So it's got to be safe.
Okay.
Because it's outside, it's not less safe than inside.
Right.
But, you know, this, we just wanted it on the record that we're thinking this way and that for the future.
Well, I think, I think there's reception to that too here.
Yeah, so maybe in the future as we.
Yep.
Because none of us know exactly how this is going to roll out.
No, exactly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Does this have a time sensitive, Brad, or is that, uh, don't we need something by the 25?
I, um, I think our goal is to have the board adopt these changes at their last meeting in December, which is, um, the 17th of December.
Yeah.
So we're definitely looking for some direction tonight. If you're not comfortable giving that direction tonight, then we'd come back on December 9th. That's our last planning commission meeting to get direction and then I'd have to get it to the board on the 17th of December.
And what we're talking about is the, uh, changes just to the zoning at this part.
Yeah, that is correct.
That, you know, so the ordinance is already going.
That's gone.
And, and so it's just the changes to the zoning at this point.
Yep.
Um, well, other than that, I'm, I'm comfortable with everything, so.
Mr. Chair, let me ask the commissioner and Brad a question. If we didn't pass it tonight, what would we gain? I mean, I'm just trying to think. We've gotten all the information tonight. Uh, what's going to change between now and December, our December meeting?
Yeah, Commissioner, part of it would be you telling me, "It's staff, here's, here's some questions we have to make a decision and we want you to go back and get that information." Um, but if that doesn't happen, then there's really nothing more I'd come back with on the night. In hearing the discussion, I'm hearing ideas of a minimum lot size, um, ensuring that there's safety and security around these. So I'm guessing other counties have thought through that as they've worked on their ordinances and I could come back and share on December 9th. Here's, here's how I'm seeing other counties deal with outdoor cultivation. Here's where they're allowing them. Here's the minimum lot sizes. Here's the struc, here's the, uh, security. If that's information that helps you decide, or tonight you could say, "That's great information, but let's wait into the future and have that discussion and let's see if there's really a market for that." And if there is, then we'll amend our ordinance six months from now. So it's really up to you to decide if you want to do this now or wait for the market.
Right. Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would kind of be in favor of, of coming back in December.
Lanny.
Yeah. Um, we've heard tonight two different points of view. One, uh, is property line and one is structure. So that's out there right now and we've heard arguments both ways on that. And, um, then there are some security concerns and everything. And I don't know that we hurt anything. I don't think we're harming anyone by waiting till December. The board will get it in December. We still get something by January 1st, 2020.
Yep.
So I'd be in favor, Mr. Chair, of.
Continuing it.
Continuing it.
To the next meeting.
Okay.
Any other discussion on that or? I'm fine with it.
Yep. That's enough time to put it together then?
Yeah, I think the question, yep.
Okay.
Good. Well, is, uh, is any further discussion or I'll entertain a motion on, on this, uh, the chapter 16. Yeah, I'll move to continue this to the next meeting.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second.
I'll second.
Second by Master Henshaw. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Continue till the December meeting.
Whenever that is, yes.
I think it's September 9th.
The 9th, he said, the 9th.
Okay, um, is. And with that, I'll go to Mr. Davis for our planning manager update.
All right, since our last meeting, the county board.
If I could just interrupt you for one minute?
Oh, sure, yep.
I just want to thank all the staff, and Mr. Davis, for the job he's done on this.
Good job.
And I think the whole commission appreciates, and appreciates all the staff work and, and everything that's done, and all the meetings, getting the input from the townships, and holding public hearings on this. This is new territory to us, and all the work that you guys do and have done really helped us to make the decision, makes it better, so thank you very much. I'm sorry, did I interrupt you, but?
That's all right, thank you. So the board did approve the rezone and preliminary plat of Valley View Industrial Park, and floodplain conditionally used permit, that was JMH Land Development, and on Valley View Drive in Sand Creek Township, so that project did get approved, they'll be coming back with the final plat and development agreement next. Also, the board approved the preliminary final plat of Hoshan One, McHugh Family Farm Partnership was the applicant property owner in Belle Plaine Township. So in December will be our last meeting of the year, in addition to this item, I think we have four or five other items on the docket, so it'll be a fairly lengthy meeting unless a few things drop off, so we'll let you know. In the past, we usually meet afterwards for holiday cookies, and we'll keep that tradition going.
Okay, that's good.
And also, that'll be the last meeting of the year, and then in January, we will elect new officers, so start thinking about that as well.
And I will not be here for December, so just, so I think Lee, Lee will be running it.
Yep.
She's got it.
You're going to miss the cookies.
I'm going to miss the cookie.
You know, if you leave, you wind up on every committee.
Yeah, I will, I will be assigned to everything.
Come on.
I just wanted to ask you, Brad, do we ever discuss the budget also?
The what?
Budget of the county?
I don't typically get into that subject here at this meeting, but I can talk to you afterwards if you have a specific question on the budget.
No, I don't have any specific.
Okay, yep.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else for us? Okay. This time I'll entertain a motion to, yeah?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Andrew.
All in favor, vote aye. Thank you very much, have a good evening.